Thank you, sir. I have none.
Any questions for Mr. Joyce?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this liquor license transfer? There's nothing else, I think that we can close the public hearing on that transfer and make a motion.
Thank you. Our next item there again would be to consider a motion to approve this transfer of ownership of the Ricker Retail Liquor License, 1945 Harrison Drive, to Wyoming Horse Racing LLC, doing business as The Horse Palace.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion? No discussion in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Yes.
That's approved. We do have some...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Absolutely.
Make one comment. Both parties are really anxious to get this liquor license active and generating income for this community. And I apologize it's taken us so long to get all the paperwork done, but we're looking forward to getting going and we thank you for your favorable vote this evening. Thank you.
We've...
We're shooting a very good...
Absolutely. We've learned that nothing happens overnight, so we've kind of grown accustomed to some wheels turning a little slower. We recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We have no consent agenda. We do have some unfinished business there, and so we first need to consider a motion to remove ordinance 2205 from the table.
I'll make a motion.
I gotta remember, get in my head so I don't say Mr. Ottley, Mr. Lynn.
You can call me Ottley, that's fine.
With the motion to remove it from the table, did I hear you, Mr. Welling? We have a motion and a second, remove 2205 from the table. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Once again, we can consider Mr. Jacobson, ordinance 2205.
So, for those that are not familiar with this request, it is a zone change request for a portion of property located along West Cheyenne Drive between Yellow Creek Road and Overthrust Road. It's on the north side, and the applicant is proposing to change the boundaries of that zone change request, which will require that the request go back to the planning commission. So, the applicant has requested that, on second reading, that the ordinance not forward, be forwarded on.
Now, be forwarded on...
Or not be approved.
I was gonna say, he was wanting us to not move forward on this.
Yeah, he does not want to move forward with it.
Okay. That's the way I understand it from hearing him last meeting, that he wanted to make some changes, and so we needed to give him an opportunity to do that before we move forward. So, Ms. Kirby, what would your... If we just didn't consider a motion at all to move this forward, it would die unless you would like us to do it in some other way.
Your Honor, no. The way that I understand it, if it never comes back from the table again, then it will die.
Okay. You comfortable with that?
That's correct.
Is everybody else comfortable with that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Then this will just die on the table, and when Mr. Welling is ready to bring it back, we'd love to hear from him.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to new business, and we'll start there with Resolution 2301. Ms. Kirby, will you read that title for us, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution 2301, a resolution authorizing adjustments to the budget of the city of Evanston, Wyoming for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, and allocating such funds and expenditures among the funds and departments as described herein.
Thank you. This is the resolution relative to what Ms. Lynn was just talking to us about, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn, please. Do you have more for us? Guess if there's nothing more to pursue, I'll entertain a... Is there an introduction on this resolution? I'll introduce with a motion to pass. Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perk seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2302. Ms. Kirby, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution 2302 is a resolution authorizing the city of Evanston, Wyoming to accept and approve a renewal offer with Delta Dental of Wyoming to provide dental insurance for city employees.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn?
Okay. I provided you with the letter from Delta Dental. It is a 6% increase this year. The past three years, we've had zero increases. And so, the average over the last eight years, Dan Hoffman gave me some numbers, was 1.69% over eight years' time, so that's not bad. None of the benefits have changed from what they were before, so I recommend we approve the...
I guess we knew when we didn't receive increases for two or three years, we knew that at some point there's going to be one, and it's going to be probably more than we anticipated to begin with. So, I don't think this should come as any shock to us.
One question. What... How much does this increase the employee, or is the city picking up the difference?
The employee amount is about 30 cents more per paycheck.
Okay. Thank you. It's a great deal.
Absolutely. Is... Any other questions before we move on? Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers with a motion. Mr. Welling seconding. Is there any discussion? Probably still, yeah.
Yeah. Dental is expensive, so...
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Resolution 2303. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Yes, Your Honor. And if I may give some background to the council for all three of these next resolutions, prior to doing so...
Yes.
These resolutions, the three of them, have already previously been approved by at least the council members that were here in August. For the newer council members, what had occurred is that in August, the city applied for ARPA funds for water and sewer projects. We were not granted those funds at that time, and then Ms. Madrid was communicated... received communication late December, before we could get it on the last December meeting, that we could reapply for those funds. And so, all three of these resolutions are for the same projects that were previously approved in August. Nothing in the application has changed, to my understanding. None of the monetary amounts have changed, and that as long as we ask for resubmission, which Ms. Madrid has already done, we just needed to repass the resolutions in order to ask for those funds again.
Excellent.
So, 2303 is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the state loan and investment board for a grant through water and sewer, ARPA grant program funding on behalf of the governing body for the city of Evanston, Wyoming, for the purpose of replacing and upgrading the antiquated... Ooh, North Grass Valley wastewater lift station with a generator to provide consistent and high-level service.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson? What she said. That's just it. We applied for these before, they were denied. There was many more projects than funding was available. Ours was denied, and for whatever reason, now there's more ARPA money available from the state, so we're gonna try again.
We'll try again. These are... All three of these projects are something that we've talked about for quite a while, and we need to accomplish them, and we had taken steps to do that, and then some setbacks come with supplies and different things that kind of delayed the projects. And, you know, as mentioned, our application for grant assistance was denied, and we're just trying again. I guess this is from my perspective what that is.
This particular resolution is for the North Grass Valley Lift Station. It's a sewer pumping station. We are just upgrading, upsizing for future development, and putting a backup generator in there, because right now, when the power goes out, the pumps don't work. We end up with alternative methods of removing that water through the tractor truck and stuff. It's just... Anyway, a lot of work to do that, so just an upgrade that's needed on that one.
Questions for Mr. Robinson before we move on?
Did they say why are... We were denied for the ARPA funds? I'm feeling...
So, it was based on, from what I understand, it was based on a point system. MICA gave me a little rundown. There was a total of 113 applications submitted, and only 19 received funding. So, of the 50 million that they had to distribute over different municipalities, they had asked for $225 million in requests, and depending on the size of your town, I think was part of it, the need for the project, if the project was already in progress, or if it was in new progress, all of those things were a ranking system, and that's how they determined who got the grant funding and who didn't. And we just didn't fall into it in that time.
Those that got it scored better than us in their scoring system.
Thank you.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor. Perk second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2304. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 2304 is what's considered priority number two of our projects in this grant. It is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the state loan and investment board for a grant through water and sewer ARPA grant program funding on behalf of the governing body for the city of Evanston, Wyoming, for the purpose of replacing aging four-inch water main lines in 18th, 19th, and West Summit Street to an eight-inch PVC piping to improve fire flow and reduce service outages.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Again, that's a project we are actually well started on, meaning that the supplies are all stockpiled now. That's... This is one we had issue with getting parts and everything. All of that's in. Now, we didn't want to start a water main project this month or last month, and now we're plowing snow around it. So, it will begin in the spring when the snow's gone. These projects, even though that one started and the next one is finished, or the... Yeah, the Sage Street one is finished, these funds are still available to reimburse us for those, so... I mean, we can handle these out of our enterprise funds, but with this grant money, it makes that money go further for us.
All introduce with a motion to pass. Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lynn with a second. Any discussion?
You know, I think as part of the city council, it's our responsibility to try to garner as much of that grant money from the federal and state government as we can, rather than just putting the burden on our citizens. Not everybody out there in the community agrees with me, and some of them think we shouldn't accept outside, because there's always strings attached, but I, as a council member, feel like that's part of our responsibility, so...
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Resolution 2305, Ms. Kirby, please.
Your Honor, this is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the state loan investment board for a grant through water and sewer, ARPA grant program funding on behalf of the governing body, for the purpose of replacing an aging four-inch water main lines in Sage Street to eight-inch PVC piping to improve fire flow and reduce service outages.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
This project's done already. This is the one that occurred last summer near ECDC along Sage Street, and that was just an upgrade on the pipe, and that one's all done. We're just going to get it paid for that way.
If we can get reimbursed, we'll do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Questions?
I just got one comment. I live on Sage Street. I feel sorry for the people on 18th and 19th. Just takes a while to get done, so good luck.
It is a significant interruption. We keep people in water all the time. We can manage that. It's just, yeah, it tears the street up, and there's really no great way around that.
Well, there's not.
But do the toilets flush faster now?
They stop right before my house. So has all the streets and the equipment. It was fun to watch.
Excellent. Any questions on this resolution before we move forward with it?
Actually, I have one.
Please.
Just doing some quick math, it looks like between the three, it's about $2 million for a grant.
1.9.
Yeah. How many people does this project employ? Are you going to be able to hire more people that need to... from the city to do?
The... For the job itself, it's already awarded to a contractor, and they do hire local people. We have to have that cleared through job service, Wyoming Job Service, for local employment, that kind of thing. I can't answer how many. That's up to the contractor to hire what they need for the job.
And which contractor?
It was Lewis &amp; Lewis.
Lewis.
Out of Rock Springs. That's not... Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Is any other questions or comments?
Thank Mika for her hard work on putting these grants together, I think.
It was a ton of work for her to do this, and a lot of information in it, and it was an experience for a while.
I just wanted to say thanks for what she does.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Comments from departments? Mr. Robinson, do you have anything more for us tonight while you're standing right there?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
First of all, welcome the new council members. We're looking forward to working with you. One thing that I've done with others in the past when they're new is to offer tours of the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, any of our facilities that we manage and take care of. And if there's anyone that's been there before and wants to go again, we'll set it up and we'll go, so...
Very interesting. I would highly recommend it.
There's a large quantity of work that goes on behind the scenes to keep water in everyone's homes, and then the sewer going away from their homes and treated and returned to the environment correctly, so at some point, I'd love to...
I would love to join you sometime.
...do and show you those facilities. They... Those facilities are a lot of our budget and a lot of what we do that's quietly never seen, but is essential, so I'd love to do that. Thank you for the reappointment. I appreciate that. We look forward to another year of doing some good work. Thank you for acknowledging the snow crews. It was rough for me this weekend, because I was stuck behind road closures in Laramie, and there's a hotel room in Laramie that's got the carpet wore out now, because I was back and forth pacing, but watched cameras and radar and phone calls and texting, and the guys have done a great job of what they do, and I'm excited to be back with them to help them tomorrow morning at 4:00 a.m. downtown again, so... So thank you for acknowledging them. They... All of them do great work, and it's not just the street crew, it's... We have people from both plants and the water department in Sanders and out hauling snow with us, and it's all of us on deck, and, in fact, I'll probably even be in the sidewalk machine tomorrow again, so it's something we all do, and I appreciate that acknowledgement, so... It's not me, it's those guys. They do good work, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all.
And before you go... Before we go... Before you go tonight, I gotta deal with you for just one second before you leave, if you sneak out.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barker, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you for the reappointment. I really appreciate being able to work in this community. I'm born and raised here, and I love to... I'm happy to live here and continue to work here.
Excellent. Thank you. Chief Vanish, see you in the...
Yes, sir. Your honor, members of councils, once again, after what they said, I think of the reappointment, and I welcome the council members. Any questions? If you have a call, see you later. So, I'm gonna give you a second to question. Here's your time, and go, councilman, we'll have a meeting last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn?
Same thing. Thank you for the reappointment, and to the new council members and even the existing ones, just have a ask if you have financial questions or questions about the bills. Anyone else in our department?
Excellent. Thank you.
Think they'll balance my checkbook for me?
It's worth a try. Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I echo that. Thank you for your commitment. I definitely don't... I love Evanston. I love every second of it. Love this job, and so do it with my ability, and I appreciate the other department heads. I want to thank the community development staff for a great year. Mika, Chris Walkout, she's... You guys know Mika, she busts her butt on anything she needs to do as asked to do, and steps up. She's called Jessie Hopkins. Thank you. Maria Rosa, Martha, Riker, Spencer, Brady, Don, and everybody in my department, they do an awesome job, so they make people look as good as I can. Thank you. And same thing, if you guys have questions, you're welcome to come in and ask me about any of the projects we have going on.
Thank you, Rob. Ms. Harris?
I'll echo the same thing. Thank you for the reappointment, and I'm excited to work with the new council and all you old council. And you already have my cell phone number. Anytime you have a question, evenings, weekends, whatever, just give me a text, and I'll take good care of you.
I know that. I have no question about that. Ms. Kirby, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I, again, saying mine's not a reappointment, so thank you for the confidence in appointing me to this new position for the city. I've been around just on the prosecution side for the council members that don't know me and members of the public that don't, but... So I feel like I've kind of been sneaking around here for a while, but it hasn't been... I haven't got to work with all the department heads that much, and so I'm excited to continue to build those relationships, and thank you again for the confidence in appointing me to this position.
Thank you. Thank you for... Thank you for willing to... Being willing to jump in. Public participation. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Oh, please, Kay.
I know a lot of people in the audience, and some of you remember Russell Dean, who was an investigator and a very good cop during that, was with for a long time, and then Pop, for instance, who was staying for years. He died up in New York City. And so, Mike, I'm gonna be calling you or somebody to help me. Kay wants me to write a public story, something in the paper about him, so I'm hoping that you may be able to help.
Absolutely. That was good to me. I just didn't know that, but he said it.
Well, sad deal. Condolences to his family. I do remember him. Anyone else? If not, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.